Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, June the 1st, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May the 18th, 2015. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have three pages of claims in the amount of $73,257.83. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none this evening.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated June 1st, 2015, in the amount of $73,257.83.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. There is no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have a sanitary sewer project rehab presentation from Westler Engineering. Brent?
We'd like to present for the Board's consideration permission to proceed with preparation of a quote package and going out for quotes for the 2015 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. The project will consist of the cured and placed pipe lining of approximately 4,100 feet of 8, 10, and 12-inch sanitary sewer. These sewers have obstructions such as roots, they leak, and they have structural issues as well. So, the purpose would be to go in with the liner that has been used on other rehab projects in the city and bring these up to good operating condition without having to do any excavation. The sewers themselves, there should be exhibits in front of you. Couple segments are located south and east of Cherry Street and Killian Drive. Also, three segments bounded by 8th and 10th and Belle Fountain and Main Street. Two segments along Hornet Avenue. A segment bounded by 6th and 7th, south of Albany. And finally, five segments along Grove Wood Drive and Grove Wood Place. We recommend going out for quotes for the project. We would like to set it up as a base quote and an add alternate quote. Under Indiana law, if it's greater than an estimated cost of $150,000, it'll have to go out for bids. We estimate you can do the 8- and 10-inch sewers for about $140,000. And our estimate on the 12-inch is about $11,000. But we think through the competitive quote process that we'll be able to get that pricing in under $150,000. So, we'd like to structure it with a base quote so that if we go out for quotes, we can at least get the 8- and 10-inch sewers done and then have the add alternate quote if the pricing comes in very competitive and do that last -- it's about 240 feet of 12-inch sanitary sewer. So, between now and your next meeting, or I should say, the meeting in July, Westler would go ahead and put the quote package together and send those out for quotes. And I think, would you like to be on schedule then to try and present these in July?
Yeah, I would like to get it out in July.
Okay, so get it out in July and then have quotes presented at the August meeting. Okay? Be happy to answer any questions you may have on the sewer rehab project.
Do you have a question, Brent? These sewers are failing and there's problems with the residents along these areas.
That is correct. And actually, it was the City of Beach Grove that recommended these sewers based upon the complaints they've been receiving and also the operation and maintenance issues they've been getting into when they're trying to clean the lines. Yes.
Thank you.
Did you want to mention, you know, we don't have any -- we're not privy to what is bad and what's worse. So, can you talk about Phil's participation?
Phil's participation? Yeah, actually, Phil is the one that has gone through and recommended these segments to be included in the project based upon his daily experience in dealing with customer complaints and Brad's as well, dealing with the resident complaints, as well as they're physically out there cleaning these sewers. So, they can tell when the jet hose gets hooked up or hung up on roots and things in the line that there's some major issues out there. Plus, we have videos on a lot of these segments when they were televised back in 2005 and 2006, when the city undertook a fairly large rehab program. And we knew back then that there were issues in these sewers. Unfortunately, money wasn't available back then in 2007 and '08 to take care of them. So, some of these segments are a carryover from that program.
And this is strictly sanitary?
Correct.
No storm?
Uh, no, there are no -- well, I'm sorry. Couple of the sewers, there are some storm drains that are tied in, if you want me to get into that.
No, not now.
Okay, these are all sanitary.
These don't affect the storm drains.
Okay, these are all separate sanitary sewers.
Okay. Okay, any further questions for Brent?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to allow Westler Engineering to proceed with the sanitary sewer rehab project.
Make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. So, you'll come back in July or?
Yes, we'll have a--
For a presentation, then we'll hear it in August.
We'll have, yes, we'll have a -- we'll put together the final quote package. And the next time I'm in front of you, I will ask for permission to go ahead and solicit quotes from at least three contractors for this work and let you know if there's been any updates to the project's scope or the estimated construction cost.
All right. Brent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes new business. No miscellaneous business to discuss. Comments from Board members?
I have none this evening.
No other comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
We are adjourned at 6:07 PM. We will meet again on Monday, June 15th. We will convene Board of Public Works and Safety in five minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, June the 1st, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board members. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May 18th, 2015. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have reviewed the minutes and I have no corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, you have a docket of 27 pages of claims in the amount of $671,180.31. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I do have one question, please. It is on page 10. About halfway down. And it is for mulch works for $6,000 for mulch. Just seems a little steep to me.
I believe, and I'm not 100% sure, I know Brad's not here this evening, but I thought that was where they rented the truck and went up and down Emerson Avenue with it. That's what I believe it was. So, there was additional cost where it sprees the mulch into the area that it needed to be.
Okay, for Main Street?
No, for Emerson Avenue.
Emerson, okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
No other questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated June 1st, 2015, in the amount of $671,180.31.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Not on your agenda is a certificate of substantial completion. Brent, could you step back up, please, and present this for us?
The Hartman Park parking lot project is complete, with the exception of some grass seed that's still taking. We recommend the Board go ahead and approve the substantial completion certificate. I believe we dated it May 16th, which is the date of substantial completion. Like I said, the project is complete. Looks really good out there. Be happy to answer any questions you may have relating to that project.
It looks good. It looks really nice.
Looks very good.
They did a nice job. Very happy with it.
I was saying flooding either.
Any other questions or comments?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the certificate of substantial completion.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. One of these ours, Brent?
Yes.
Please step forward. We have no unfinished business to carry forward. Under new business, we have several items. And the first is a request from Villa Baptist Church to use the soccer field. And my friend Pastor Hale's here. Pastor, could you come up very briefly to the podium? I'm going to have the clerk read this into the record and then you can speak on it very briefly.
Thank you, Dan. Villa Baptist Church has partnered with Child Evangelism Fellowship for the Good News Across America National Outreach. Each summer, Child Evangelism Fellowship selects one city as its outreach focus, and they have selected Indianapolis this year. As a Good News Across America partner, Villa Baptist Church is seeking permission to use the soccer field next to the Public Works facility in Beach Grove for one and a half to two hours on Monday, July 20th through Friday, July 24th, for a five-day club opened to all boys and girls in 1st through 5th grades. During each day of this five-day club, boys and girls will be taught lessons of obedience, honesty, truthfulness, and other quality characteristics from a biblical perspective. They will also participate in many games and songs that they will enjoy and will receive snacks each day. All our workers will have background checks to ensure safety of all participants. Parents are welcome to attend the five-day club along with their children. We believe that if Mayor Buckley and this Board will allow this opportunity, it will make a difference in the lives of these boys and girls, as well as their families and community. If you require any additional information, please contact me at Villa Baptist Church office, Reverend Marvus Hale.
Thank you. Reverend, very briefly, can you give us a little impromptu what you'd like to do?
Okay, well, what we would like to do is what over 30 churches in Indianapolis will be doing during this period of time. And I think it was Hitler that said that if you give me one generation of children, we will control the world. And we believe that the gospel of Jesus Christ can make a difference. And this Good News Across America has seen some wonderful things happen in Las Vegas, Chicago, and some of these other cities. And we believe, and it's -- some of them are very rough, rough areas. And sometimes even parents are converted in this. On a Friday night, we will invite all of those, the three clubs that we support and conduct during that same week to our church parking lot. We'll have some games and bouncy houses and food and things like that, and an excellent presentation of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And that's our desire. We have no ulterior motives, I guess you could say. But we would like to raise some children and even parents. Parents are welcome to come.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I will say, we have selected the soccer field because of the large apartment complex right across the street from the Public Works Department. And we have at least one family that lives there in our church, and that's how we have come to know about that apartment complex and heard that there is some need there, I believe. And so, we hope that we can make a difference.
I think when we met, we've met a couple times, one on this matter, but we've discussed that if we approve this, we assume a risk as a city. So, you will have to provide us with proof of insurance.
I have that. And our agent said that he would need to know the exact location, which we haven't secured that location yet, in order to complete this. If you'd like a copy of this, I'd be glad to give it to you now, but--
How about if we give you the address and then you can submit it to us?
Okay, after our agent completes it?
Yes.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. Any other questions or comments?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve, to allow Villa Baptist Church to use the soccer field from July the 20th through the 24th for one and a half, two hours per day.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. All right, it's good to see you also.
Dave Brink.
Next on the agenda is security fence quotes from the public safety tax. Chief Ford. I guess, first thing, Mark, could you address the Board on what you would like to do?
The police department, for many years, has been vulnerable in the back of it. When we bring prisoners, our officers get out of cars. When I was working the road, many times, we would have family members or friends meet us in the back as we were getting prisoners out of our cars. At night, it's sort of a scary situation where you re-deal with these people that you dealt with on the street. And we would like to put a fence around the back end to where the officers have the prisoners and take them in the building or process them to make the area a little bit more secure, actually, a lot more secure and safe. I've received two quotes on the fencing. One is from K&amp;K Fence, and the other one is from Lowe's, the store here in Beach Grove. The K&amp;K Fence comes in at $27,815. Lowe's is $27,486.04. With the K&amp;K Fence, there's a little bit added to it that they do not do. They require some pavement work to be done on the backside of the building or the backside of the parking lot because they use an entrance that is pressure-type entrance and exit, and they do not supply the electrical service, electrical company, to do that. And according to Lowe's, they do the electrical work and their mechanism is ran off of a, like a garage door opener type entrance, frequency type entrance.
Questions or comments from the Board?
I do have a question. So, I am familiar with K&amp;K. I'm not familiar with Lowe's, but they come with a pretty good guarantee, K&amp;K does, correct? And would Lowe's have that same guarantee?
I don't know what kind of guarantee you know about it. As I understand that, I think it's a three-year guarantee, but there's a different guarantee that comes on the mechanism for the openers. And it all depends on, K&amp;K has one type opener, Lowe's has another. And I think the brochure says it's a year on both. The fencing is probably a longer guarantee, but the mechanism's different. Lowe's uses another fence contractor that is located here in Beach Grove on Bethel Avenue. So, both Lowe's and their contractor are located here. But there are two different kinds of entrances for the fence.
Now, would this cover the entire back going up to where the fire chief has his office and so forth?
It would include enclosing that. What it does, it goes from the front of the building across the driveway and then on the east and west side, and then follows the blacktop all the way around all the building. So, it covers the north. That is completely covered enclosed in the east and west, and then the entrance up to the front. Where the civilian entrance, that's not enclosed. That's still open.
Well, that's up front, correct.
That's up front, and that's open.
Now, will they have a access to get to the fire section in the back? I know they have meetings every once in a while. How are you going to get in? I know people want to have a garage door opener holding for that.
There would be a system inside the police building that could open the fence for people. And I would imagine that the fire chief could arrange that. We will have an entry gate on the back also and a walk-through gate on the backside of it. So, we would be more encouraged for people, for the fire department, to use the backside instead of through the police department drive.
Thank you. The payment for this would be taken out of the increase in the public safety tax. It's the same category that we're going to purchase a fire engine with and the same one we approved, the tank removal, last meeting. So, this will come after the tank removal. And Chief, I just want to drive this point home. The reason that we're doing this is for the personal safety of the police officer?
Yes.
I know I heard a story of a gang back there that just terrified me. I don't know if you want to share that or not?
There's been a couple instances. I'm not sure which one, but we've had recently even that a family member has come back and wanted their family member released to them and demanded that they did not do anything wrong. And when you have maybe one or two officers, usually just one officer will bring the prisoner back and because we believe the situation's handled and will leave. Just one officer to transport them is just situation. And there is a -- in Pennsylvania, if you remember, the, not that this would stop gunfire, but there was a trooper killed during a sniper incident in Pennsylvania months ago. But it's more of people coming into their facility. We have a sign that says authorized personnel only, but the sign doesn't stop anybody. They still drive back there. And we have people also that drive from the police department through the fire department just looking to see what's there. We'll stop and ask them. They say, "Oh, we just want to see what was here." And it's not very secure or safe.
I think for the security of our officers, we do need--
Chief, what is your recommendation? Who should we -- who's the most responsive bidder?
I think the best bidder for the city and the police department is the Lowe's bid.
All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to--
Do we need to read this into the record?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and let the, have the clerk read that into the record, please.
Mayor Buckley, Board of Works. I have received two quotes, one from K&amp;K Fence and the other from Lowe's Beach Grove. The fence secures the back of the police station with six-foot-high fence, two drive-through gates, and one walk-through between the fire and police departments. The drive-gates will be automatic. Quote from K&amp;K is $27,815. Does not include the needed electrical and pavement work. Quote from Lowe's is $27,486.04 and includes an entry system that the officer can use with their in-car radios to open. This system does not require any pavement work. Mark Schwartz, Chief of Police.
Thank you. Motion to approve the installation of a fence at the police department and to accept the bid from Lowe's not to exceed $27,486.04.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Chief, next item of business is the front door. I'll have the clerk read it into the record, please.
Mayor Buckley and the Board of Works. Security door and ADA entrance doors. Dear Mayor and Board of Works, the police department needs to be more secure than it is to protect employees and any citizen that might be inside. The front entrance should be more ADA accessible than what is at this time. I have received quotes for a bullet-resistant door installed and the needed hardware for the front entrance doors installed. Central Indiana Hardware quoted $6,376.62 for the resistant door and $8,752.63 for the ADA doors, two, for a total price of $15,129.25. Central Indiana Security Corporation quoted $11,778 for both. Mark Schwartz, Chief of Police.
Thank you. Chief, can you go through the reasoning for the new door in the front?
Talk about the ADA door. That, I think we need to be more compliant, more easily accessible to the handicapped. Right now, if somebody would come up with a walker or wheelchair, the door opens out. So, they would have to pull on it and open it backwards into them as they get into it. City Hall has a door that is accessible, and I think that we should be the same way. I talked to one of our handicapped military personnel, and he is in total agreement that it should be better for what it is. The electric doors are a little bit more expensive because at the police department, we have two doors. And after four o'clock, those doors are locked. One of the doors is locked where the person can only come into the vestibule part of it, to where they can contact a communications officer to someone's help or information. So, the doors will be on a separate system so one can be secure and one can be open 24 hours. The second door is a bullet-resistant door. We have bullet-resistant glass inside the lobby at this time, but the door dated, is probably dated back to 1972, when the building was first constructed, which, if you look at it, it has glass on part of it. And I was told that it doesn't take much to push that glass out, reach inside and turn the doorknob and enter the building. And as far as bullet-resistant, it is not. It's a heavy door, but it wouldn't stop many bullets. And safety and security for the civilians and officers inside, I think, is a big issue. Same as the fence. I think this day and age, we need to be more cautious and secure in how we protect anybody that's in the building.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
Is the police station a safe place? Does it have that yellow banner with the, do you know what I'm speaking of?
I know what you're speaking of. I think the fire department is supposed to be, but I don't think that we have that.
Okay.
I'm not sure why.
Okay. So, with the ADA door, are we in compliant, compliance now?
I'm not sure what all the rules are, but I think that we're not.
Now, would that require electronics coming in for the handicap?
Yes, there would have to be two separate buttons to open each door.
So, now, you're talking about on that second door, having the bulletproof--
Not on the, not on the entry. The bulletproof--
The second door in.
Well, it actually would be the third door in, that wooden door that's there now.
Okay.
That would be a bullet-resistant door.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions from Board? Any other question from board members? Chief, what would be your recommendation of a quote to accept?
The recommendation would be the Central Indiana Security Corporation. They came in at a lower price, and by looking at the quote, their door is just as heavy, and the warranty work for the ADA looks like it's the same.
And the way that it's paid for is the same mechanism that's paying for the fence, the tank removal, and the fire engine. So at this time, I'll ask for motion to approve the chief's request to install new front doors and to accept the quote from Central Indiana Security Corp. not to exceed $11,778.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Board, you should have received a estimate from Central Indiana Security Corporation Limited pursuant to City Hall. I didn't put it on the agenda because it didn't require a bid or quote process.
Yes.
But this is also part of this as well, the same mechanism to pay. And I want to defer to the clerk, since this affects the front and the back of the building and his side of the building. So could you briefly discuss it?
Yes. They came out, they looked at the different locations and where they thought the cameras would be best placed in the building for security reasons. And there's one outside the building, which would cover almost the entire front of the building plus part of the steps coming up into the council chambers and so forth. There's one in the back that will be monitored, where it will be monitoring the entire parking lot back there, where employees come and go, so that will protect them there. On the inside, it will have one on the corporation side, one on the sewage side, and it'll monitor where we keep money and who comes and goes out that door and so forth. One of the issues, especially on the outside front, we've had a couple falls out there, and that would help monitor that, where we had it on tape. And knock on wood, since Tom Wilson put the rails in out there, we have not had one. So hopefully, that problem's eliminated now, where it's made them more aware of a step being there. But anyway, this bid came in at $1,812.90, and I think it's money well spent. And so it's my recommendation to approve the estimate.
I asked for a motion to approve the estimate from Central Indiana Security Corporation not to exceed $1,812.90.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. Before we proceed, we talked about the public safety tax and the fire engine and the tank removal and the fence for the police department and the cameras. I wanted the clerk very briefly to go through the process of how the money gets appropriated and when it could be paid for.
Okay. Well, we'll have to do on this. Back when we found out last year that we were going to get extra into public safety money, we didn't know how much, when it would come in, anything else. So what we need to do is do an additional appropriation, which Jeff Peters, our financial advisor, will actually put that together for us. And then it has to be advertised and so forth. But the money will be there for us to do these things. And so anyway, the first thing we've got to do is we've got to advertise it a couple different times, let the public know what's going on, what we're spending the money on, and it's just a good thing for the city.
I agree.
Well, that is the process, and we'll proceed with the council probably in July. Next order of business is a promotion within the fire department. Chief?
Mayor and Board, I come before you today to ask for approval of the promotion of Angie Lectenberg to the rank of EMS lieutenant. If approved, Angie will fill the open position of EMS lieutenant and be assigned on B shift. Her base salary will be $2,462.40 per pay. This increase of position pay is in our 2015 budget. With your approval, the effective date will start next payroll on June 6, 2015.
And her promotion, Chief, is a result of...
Erin Janetti, who was her EMS lieutenant, was just promoted to merit fire lieutenant.
Thank you. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. Ask for motion to approve the promotion of Angie Lectenberg to EMS lieutenant.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Congratulations, Angie.
Thank you. I did. Thank you. Those are two couple words. And thank you, Chiefs. I know I talk a lot, but, you know, public speaking's not one of my big things, so thanks.
All right. Aren't you going to introduce your husband?
My husband?
Soon as we get him up here.
I was hoping my son would be here tonight, too, but the older of the two, the one that, you know, wasn't going to change his life.
That's an inside joke.
All right, you. Thanks, Chief. I'll go ahead. Next up is handicap parking. I'll come back to you. Board, there's been an application, a new application for handicap parking for Gwen Pettigrew, who lives on North 16th Avenue. And it was brought forward. At the bottom, it says the applicant stated that he does have a driveway. There was a question about whether permits get issued to people who have a disability if they have a driveway. And generally, it doesn't happen, but there's been two. There's two people that do have permits that have driveways. One of them is on Rotherham Lane, and the other one is on North 7th. So I'll leave it up to the board. My position is going to be that I don't want to take anything away from someone who has a disability, their ability to park a vehicle. So floor is open for questions or comments.
Well, that's kind of on the fence, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, if you look in the older section with the alleys, people have access, park in the back as well. So if you cut...
I mean, if you have a driveway, that driveway is your reserved spot.
Yeah, so I, you know, you have to move ways. I don't know. I don't see any problem.
Is there accessibility, like, that's on the street when they have their reserved?
She lives on North 16th, and that's a one-way north. So, and they do have a driveway in their property. If the people that live on Rotherham apply for a permit, they come in and we deny it. They're going to say, "Why are you denying it?" Because you've given it to us for years. It was issued before we became... Our administration started, so I'm not...
It would kind of be hard to change that now at this point. And I do, you know, I do have a disabled brother, and it is so difficult. And sometimes you just need to make things easier, I guess, for people with disabilities. And if this helps them, let's give it to them.
Well, then I would need a motion to approve the parking permit.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next is a request for a block party. Dan?
To whom it may concern, I am requesting a permit for a block party on June 28 from 12 to 4 for Andrea Drive between Andrea Court and Angela Court. We have discovered this week that many of our neighbors don't really know one another, as some have recently moved in. Due to some activity at one particular house in our neighborhood, many neighbors I've spoken with have mentioned they would love to have a neighborhood crime watch. We thought by having this block party, we could all get to know one another, and this could be a kickoff to our neighborhood crime watch. There is a possibility that we would have live music for a couple hours, but more than anything, just getting to know one another, exchange contact info, and discovering how we can work together to look out for one another. Please contact me with any questions or concerns you may have. Sincerely, Don Whelan.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I think it's a great thing.
Chief, you have any problem with, say, the live music or...
Just a couple of comments. They wanted on Andrea Drive, is that correct? I would suggest if it's a neighborhood, move it to one of the courts. Andrea's not a busy, but busy enough drive that when you close it off, I think that you might create problems with the drive. I would suggest they move it to one of the courts for safety reasons.
Dave, you live down there. What's your take on it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know how to... It'd be kind of bad to block off Andrea Drive because it goes into Yazoo.
Yeah, so you know, it runs over the night.
Yeah, and, yeah. I mean, Andrea Court is right there. I mean, part of the people I know want to have that live on Andrea Court.
And I think that they wanted to get together and talk about things. And one of the things they want to talk about is the house at 609 Andrea. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. That's a problem. And, you know, I've talked with the police chief and talked to several people that live down there. And I think we should do whatever we can to eradicate the problem. So these people getting together, I don't see anything wrong with it. And I think they want the police down there to talk to them about how they can control their own neighborhood to get people like that out. So I know when this lady called me, she wanted to... Was going to invite the police down there. So any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, it's important for everyone to come together, but I, you know, for safety, blocking off a main thoroughfare.
How about if we do a motion to approve the block party on June 28 from 2 to 4 for Andrea Court?
It's 12.
12 to 4, I'm sorry.
I'll make said motion on that.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is surplus the senior bus, Senior Citizen Center. I'll defer to the clerk to read the request into the record, please.
Board of Public Works and Safety, with the pending purchase of a new bus for the senior citizens, I would like to surplus the current bus that we work out of at the June 20 auction. Thank you, Carla Marchbanks.
The senior bus just broke down again, and they've lent it, and they fixed it. It was an alternator issue. But effective June 15, she would like to surplus it and get it into the auction for June the 20th. No questions or comments?
Yeah.
I have none.
Now, I ask for motion to approve the request to surplus the senior bus.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is Resolution Number 5. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The clerk has a request to surplus a printer in his office. Sorry.
Board of Public Works and Safety, we have in the sewer department a surplus printer. It's an HP 4250, 4350 series. It's an HP LaserJet. We had some issues with it, and we've got another copier and printer that we can use and have been using. And so I would like to surplus this and put it into the auction.
Questions or comments? Now, I ask for motion to surplus the printer in the clerk's office.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Resolution Number 5. This started out as Resolution Number 4. I made a mistake on the printing. It should be Resolution Number 5 concerning leasing the senior bus. I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Resolution Number 5, 2015, is a resolution that allows the city of Beach Grove to enter into a purchase, into a master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement concerning a 25-passenger bus purchase for the Elton Geiswiler Senior Citizen Center, whereas the Elton Geiswiler Senior Citizen Center is in need of a new 25-passenger bus to be used for transportation, and whereas it is desired the city to maintain its fleet and replace vehicles that are unsafe, costly to maintain, and could be a burden on the city financially. And whereas it is the desire of the Board of Public Works and Safety to purchase a new 25-passenger bus and to instruct Clerk Treasurer to enter into a master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, now hereby be it ordained that the Board of Public Works and Safety through the Clerk Treasurer shall enter into an agreement for the financing of the purchase of...
That should be, sorry, that should be senior bus.
Okay. The financing of the senior bus through U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, now hereby be it ordained that the lease amount shall not exceed $53,000. Be it further ordained that this resolution shall only apply to the financing of a 25-passenger bus for the Elton Geiswiler Senior Citizen Center. Be it further ordained that this resolution shall go into effect immediately after approval by the Board of Public Works and Safety attested by the Clerk Treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Questions or comments from board members?
I do have one question on this. In here, it says U.S. Bancorp. I would like for it to say whoever I can get the best leasing program to. I spoke to Regions Bank the other day on the police vehicles, and we went through the HELP program the last time, which was the Indiana Bond Bank. And Regions Bank was one of them that suggested that I go through that. They didn't even get an opportunity to bid on it. And so he asked me from now on, would I make sure I send him an email to let him know anytime we have anything we'd like to finance? So I just think whatever's best responsive bid for financing is who we should go through.
Where it says, "Now hereby be it ordained", the last sentence, it says U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance Incorporated. I'll ask for a motion to amend, to read or... I'll ask for a motion to amend, to read or, or to include or best leasing arrangement.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Now, Dan, if we could reread that one...
This one paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. "Now hereby be it ordained that the Board of Public Works and Safety through the Clerk Treasurer shall enter into an agreement for the financing of the purchase of senior center vehicle through U.S. Bancorp Leasing and Finance or the best leasing arrangement."
All right. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up, 2000 Horton Chancery Replacement. Chief?
Mayor and Board, I come before you today recommending a specification bid for the remount of our 2000 Horton ambulance. The initial bid process for new ambulance exceeded the budgetary amount anticipated. The city of Beech Grove will reserve the right to accept or reject all bids received during this process. Be happy to answer any questions about the ambulance remount and bid process.
Floor is open for questions or comments? We, uh, we started out by opening our, advertising for our new ambulance. And it, we had, I think, one bid come in, it was exorbitant, so, um, we did not accept that bid. So, uh, we rejected it, so we were starting from scratch. And, uh, Chief has come up with another way to, uh, bring a new ambulance in, but to save a significant amount of money through rechancing. So, if you don't have any questions or comments, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the Chief's request and start the process to, uh, have a specification bid for advertisement to, uh, remount the 2000 Horton ambulance.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two items that are not, uh, on the agenda that need review this evening, and they're both master vendor license for fireworks. Chief, come forward. The first one is Pyroville Fireworks, who want to conduct business at 3535 South Emerson Avenue. And they applied, uh, May the 27th, and their, uh, permit is up for review. Any reason why we shouldn't do this?
No, I reviewed the permit, and I checked name or names that were given to me, and I find no reason to deny it.
Okay, floor is open for questions or comments?
I have none.
None.
All right. No questions or comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve the master vendor permit for Pyroville Fireworks.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next one up is a master vendor permit for USA Fireworks. Chief, uh, have you had a chance to look at this one as well?
I reviewed that one, and I checked names that were given to me, and I don't have any reason to deny that one either.
Okay, floor is open for questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask a motion to approve the master vendor permit for USA Fireworks located at 4904 South Emerson Avenue.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That concludes, uh, new business for this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none this evening.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:58 PM. We will convene again on Monday, June 15th at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, but I bet he was ready.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beech Grove, and at this time we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, June the 1st, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Mobley, City Council Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Mary Hughes Stewart, District 1.
Kathy Coats, Council at Large.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A special presentation this evening. I don't believe Trent Newport is here. Uh, we have a proclamation for EMS Week, and at this time I'll ask the fire chief to step forward, please. I'd like to read the proclamation into the record. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service to the people and communities of Indiana. Whereas, the theme of EMS Week 2015 EMS Dedicated for Life recognizes the countless lives that have been saved by the dedication of EMS personnel. And whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention, and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community. And whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas emergency medical services personnel, including emergency medical technicians, paramedics, dispatchers, first responders, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, firefighters, educators, and administrators have engaged in many hours of specialized training to improve their life safety skills. Whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments, accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beech Grove, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th to the 23rd, 2015, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Beech Grove. With the theme EMS Dedicated for Life, I encourage the community to observe this week and all through the year, and join with me in thanking all emergency service workers. Chief?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to thank you for the recognition of EMS Week to all our employees. Uh, first and foremost, I have to thank each and every one of our dedicated providers who are out there 24/7 on the streets, providing good quality service to the citizens of Beech Grove. And I appreciate your support to the fire department, to our personnel, and just like to thank you.
Thanks, Chief. This time I'll defer to Tim Latimer to address the council on the Promoters Club activity. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening, Tim. Um, we just wanted to bring you up to date with some of the changes that are going to be taking place with this year's July 3rd event. Um, let me give you some dates first. Friday, July 3rd, we'll have our regular routine, I guess you'd call it. The food booths and the fireworks at dusk. Uh, food sales will begin at 5 o'clock, give or take, approximately 5 o'clock. DJ begins approximately 5 o'clock. Uh, games for kids in the main shelter area, approximately 8 o'clock. And then, of course, the fireworks, uh, which usually starts right about 10. Now, this year, we will be having a craft fair. And it will be at the north end of the park, where we normally park cars. And they play soccer there now. Um, this year, there will be no parking in that area. And we're going to have these craft booths there. These are all local folks who have asked us to provide some sort of avenue. I mean, we can only get so many folks involved in the fall festival. This gives some of these folks an opportunity to, to show what, you know, they do. To have a variety of different crafts that, um, we'll have out there, a lot of booths. Uh, we've had 35 people inquire. We don't know how many booths we're going to have, but they'll all be on the north end. Parking this year, at some point late in the afternoon, we'll close the park down so that we have parking, handicap parking only. And the handicap parking will be available in the designated parking areas. We're not going to park cars in the grass anymore. There are a couple of reasons for this. Mainly, it's because it tears up the park. And Tom and the guys have a hard time every year getting the park back in shape. The second reason is, it's just a safety factor. We can put a lot of cars in the park, and getting them out at night is dangerous. And, um, you know, we're just not gonna do it anymore. So, uh, with that being said, we'll have a few folks who are, uh, not aware of this. Uh, you know, we're gonna need you to help spread the word. I'm going to let the newspapers know. But parking in the park after a certain time, and we don't know exactly when that'll be yet. Maybe five-ish. After five-ish or so, the only people who are allowed to come into the park will be people with a valid handicap parking sticker, tag. And, um, that along with the, uh, the craft fair booths that'll be set up at the north end, um, I think that's about the only changes we're going to have. So, do you have any questions for me?
I do, Tim. I have a question. Is it going to be on the west side
or east side of the entrance into the park, or both sides?
The craft fair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It'll be, you know where the Lions Club always sets up with their... It'll be just north of where those guys are, okay? In that, you know, I call it the hill. It's the north hill. They'll be right in there, right is, you know, where it's flat.
Okay.
And we'll just try to get as many people in there as we comfortably can. Yes?
My question may be more for, so for the police, but how is this gonna impact parking on the streets?
Well, I don't think it'll impact too much. There really aren't that many cars that we park in the, uh, in the park itself. When you get right down to it, you know, there's probably only about 200 cars that we get into the park on July 3rd.
But that's a lot of cars extra to be out on the street.
Well, it, they're just going to have to find space outside the park.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering, I mean, if...
Yes.
I think it's an exceptional idea. I think 5 o'clock could be a great cutoff. Anybody that's not there by 5 o'clock, except for handicap people, I think is a great idea. Um, it's dangerous enough outside the park where you have sidewalks for the kids to walk on. Can't imagine having cars pulling out in the dark, in the grass, when people walk around with multiple children.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a superb idea.
Yeah, we think so, too. You know, we had one of our guys get hit last year. You know, he's out there directing traffic, and we're trying to keep him, and we give them, you know, we give them cards when they come in that say, you know, "You can't leave. You can't leave until all the foot traffic is gone." And 99% of the folks, you know, do exactly what we ask, but you always have a few who wanna bend the rules, that are in a hurry to get out. And we had one of our own guys, you know, get bumped a little bit last year, you know?
I apologize for that.
So, you know, those are the kind of things that, uh, you know, we're just gonna try to help put it into.
Tim, I, I believe, um, the Methodist Church, uh, is, uh, working out an idea. I think the new shuttle...
Well, we've been putting some feelers out, asking folks to...
Uh, I think they're starting at the middle school, parking up there, I believe, and bringing people down. I believe. So, you might check, check into that.
Now, you say they might be bringing people down?
Yes.
In some sort of a shuttle?
People parking at the middle school and then driving down to the park.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we had kicked around the idea. We even talked to Dr. Kaiser about using school buses to, um, to transport, to transport people, but, um, you know, we're just, we're, we're not going to do that. We'll, we're going to have to count on the community to open up parking spaces and, um, let everybody be safe in the park.
Uh, there's just, there's not 200 spaces they can open up to.
In the streets?
Streets are already packed.
They park all over by me. They can park in the brand-new...
They park in the...
They can park in the brand-new, uh, paved parking lot there on 9th Street for the Ball Diamond. So, I think it'd be perfect.
Fit a lot of them in there.
I think it's a great idea, cutting it off.
Well, again, you know, the main reason is safety, and the second reason, of course, is, uh, the damage that it's doing to the park.
Hey, Tim, do you know, by chance, and this might be a question for someone else, if St. Francis is allowing people to park over there again this year, like they did last year? I don't know if they agreed to or not. I don't know if people parked over there.
We are looking into that. We haven't got a confirmation on that.
That'd be a purpose.
It is, yeah. We, uh, there was a question about liability. Um, and we, by the way, I was going to speak with Dan and Dennis. Uh, we are in the process of entertaining, uh, bids for new insurance. And we've already received one bid. We've got another one coming up later on this week, so... Um, that's another thing that we wanted to talk to them about. Our liabilities as far as shuttle service, our liabilities as far as parking outside the park, et cetera. So, uh, these are some of the things that we just don't have answers yet.
Okay? Any other questions for Tim?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Always a pleasure, Tim.
Thank you.
Uh, Kelly with Mayor Ballard's office.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. I have just a few things to update you on. One is the Perry Cultural Festival is coming up on Saturday, June 20th. It's gonna be from 9 to 3 at the Baxter YMCA. And it's kind of the first event of its kind down here on the south side, so I hope that a lot of you guys can attend. Um, they're gonna have a soccer tournament. They're having food, vendors, um, dancing, a family run and walk that morning, entertainment. Um, so I know that the German club is gonna be involved, the Chin community is gonna be involved, the Latino community is gonna be involved. Um, so it should be a pretty neat event. It's being sponsored by, um, Positively Perry, which was kind of started through the Greater South Side Business Alliance, so... And they have several sponsors that are helped put it on this event.
Can you read that date again?
Yes, it's Saturday, June 20th.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Also, the 60th and final Mayor's Night Out for Mayor Ballard is going to be this Thursday, June 4th at 5:30 at Riverside Park Family Center. Unfortunately, I wasn't in this job long enough to have my own down here. They took that one away from me. There's just one more left. But it's open to everyone, and they really want to see some people from the south side come up there to Riverside Park, so hopefully you guys will come. I'm trying to get cake, since it's the last one. Seems like we should have a celebration or something. So, come for a piece of cake, and to get all of your questions answered as well. Um, the 7th Annual Mayor's Bike Ride is this Saturday. It starts at City Market, so if anybody has participated in that before or is interested in participating this year, it's a fun time. There's safety information, kids' bikes, helmets that they give away, door prizes. Um, again, this Saturday, it starts at City Market. And then, also, for everybody who's used the Mayor's Action Center before, there was an email that went out, but I want to make sure that everybody knows we have a new system, computer system. I mean, it's still the Mayor's Action Center, and it still functions in a similar way, but the phone lines were down. They were closed Friday at noon, and they opened back up again this Monday morning at 7:30. Um, so while they're going through this transition, if you call, and it takes just a slight bit longer, um, it's because we're on the new computer system. And also, you can still leave an anonymous report, but the way the new system works is everything's gonna be found by people's telephone numbers. So, if you, you'll have to give your contact information, but when people request the public information that goes with that record, your information will not appear if you want it to be anonymous, so that's still a possibility. So, we're looking forward to that. Um, if you use the Request Indy app or online... If you use the Request Indy app or online, any requests that you put in prior to today, you won't be able to see without calling the Mayor's Action Center and getting that information, updates or whatever. Everything from today forward, you'll still be able to look in the computer and see, so. Coffee with a Cop, IMPD is having a Coffee with a Cop at the McDonald's on Southport Road. The address is forty, forty-four East Southport Road, so it's the McDonald's on the north side of Southport, same side as Cracker Barrel by Gray Road there. That's where they're going to be. That is going to be June tenth, from eleven to one. So, McDonald's sponsors the coffee. You can come and chat with IMPD if you'd like. And then, summer servings, I looked that up before I came here. I didn't see any Beach Grove Schools listed, or maybe you guys are separate, but the Perry Township Schools, several of them close to you, do the summer servings, which that's for any family to go and get lunch over the summer. They don't ask for any, what school do you go to, or show your financial records or anything. It's open to everyone if you want to go and get lunch at a school cafeteria, and you can just get on summerservings.org and see the locations by you. And then, let's see. Oh, the Mayor's Community Service Awards, the deadline is this Saturday. I know I've mentioned that to you guys before, but there's a lot of good work going on here in Beach Grove, and the mayor of Indianapolis would like to recognize that as well. So, you have until this Saturday to nominate people, and you can get the information for that at indy.gov/frontporch. That was all I had for you guys. Do you have anything for me?
Questions for Kelly?
Yeah, Kelly, do you know, by chance, when the Mayor Ballard's Veterans Appreciation picnic is? I believe I saw a memo of that coming up.
Yes, I do, but I can't tell you right now because I don't have that paper with
me, but I'll email it to Mayor Buckley, and he can get it out to you guys.
Saturday, August, or Saturday, June thirteenth, from eleven until one-thirty at Garfield Park.
There you go. There's a lot going on at Garfield Park. I know you guys have your own parks and stuff here, too, but the Garfield Park Library is having the Earth Friendly Festival. They just had that, actually, this past weekend. I just went to the IMPD Community Day at Garfield Park. There's just a lot in that area this summer, so if you're looking for something to do, you can always head up that way, too.
Do you have any updates on the four-sixty-five interchange right here along here? When will all that work be done? Are they on schedule?
They are on schedule. I do not have...
You are the liaison.
Yes, I know.
Pushing off on Endot.
The completion date that I had, it is, it is an Endot project, that is correct, so it's not the city of Indianapolis. The completion date I had was December of two thousand and fourteen, so we're a little bit beyond that. I've had several people contact me concerned about the trees that have been removed and the wall that's not built yet, and what is that situation going to be? So, if you're driving, you can see there's already some of the wall in place. That is just like a retention wall, the new sound wall that's going to be at the level of all those homes on four-sixty-five there. It'll be ten to fifteen feet from the level of those homes, tall, to keep out the noise and the sight of the interstate. So, there's a whole nother wall still that has to go in, so, a little while yet.
They already tagged it down there at sixty-five and four-sixty-five. Just awful.
Yeah. Contact Endot, they'd be happy to give you an update, I'm sure.
Good luck. All right.
How about the giant storm sewer they're building over off Mann Road and the two-hundred...
The Deep Rock Tunnel?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that is moving along quite nicely, from what I understand. I've been asked about that as well. I have a couple residents from Perry Township that they drive by that every day on their way to work or whatever. And again, that, that would be not a city project necessarily, so there's other people that help give updates on that, but it is on schedule according to the...
There's no way you could get us a tour?
A tour? Let me check on that.
All right.
See if you guys can walk through the tunnel?
Yeah.
Sure.
That'd be awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Kelly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Counsel, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May the fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, unless for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Committee reports, youth council will not report this evening. The Greenscape Report is on file, the Redevelopment Commission Report is on file. There's no ABC report. Chief, did the Public Safety Committee meet?
No.
Okay. Financial report. Clerk?
Good evening, councilors. We just filed the mid-year one-hundred R on behalf of the city of Beach Grove. It is a form that has to be filed with Marion County Clerk's Office, and it lists all employees and their estimated income for this year. We used both the budget and payroll reports to complete this. The Marion County Clerk's Office reviews the list of names to see if there is any outstanding liens, outstanding child support, garnishments, et cetera, that are filed. I have been reviewing the actual revenue numbers for the first four months of the year and comparing those with the budgeted amounts. The sewage revenues are down in comparison to the same period last year, and so we are reviewing that to determine the cause. Everything else looks good. I am beginning the process of securing financing to purchase a senior center bus, which is in the budget. We purchased a new car for the senior center, which was also in the budget, and we paid for that with cash or check. We budgeted twenty-five thousand, we spent twenty-two thousand, five-eighty-one-twenty, including the decal that was eighty-five dollars. This evening, we concluded the payments on the Little League paving project, which the paving came in at three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, one-seventy-seven-nineteen, and Westler Engineering has come in at thirty-two-thousand, five-seventy-seven-thirty-one. The dispersments were split between the stormwater, sewage, and local roads and streets accordingly. Money is budgeted in local roads and streets, stormwater and sewage for projects. Projects do not have to be budgeted individually, rather just money budgeted in those funds for projects in general, and the project has to meet the correct use for the fund. Councilor Jennings asked me at the last meeting if the CCD fund has any money in it, and it has a balance of two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. The fund number is four-oh-two. And twenty-ten was the last year that there was any activity in the fund, including receipts or dispersments. Also, in reference to ordinance number ten, chapter number thirty-eight of the city ordinances encompasses both the CCD fund and the rainy day fund. So, when you delete that, you will create another ordinance to govern the rainy day fund, or will you just amend ordinance number ten so that it does not include eliminating the rainy day fund? The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens. This month here, we had approximately forty-one thousand hits on the website. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beachgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who, who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website. All the bank balances as of this morning are on the website. And as always, if you have any question, my door is always open. Thank you, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Questions or comments for the clerk? Not a compliance report. Derek?
I'm sure, as you probably have all noticed, the month of May was very, very busy for us. Suddenly, the beginning of the month, grass grew throughout the city, basically all at the same time, so it's taken a lot of time to get caught back up. As you can see, we visited a hundred-and-eighty-four addresses with violations found. That's almost twice the number for the whole rest of the year to date. A vast majority of those, with the exception of a handful, a few others, were tall grass issues. Most of the places that I have revisited, I already took care of their problems, or they reached out to me and told me they were having minor problems, such as their lawnmower didn't start at the beginning of the season, in which case, we worked with them. I want to thank everyone for their patience, as we've gone around and worked through everyone in the city. It does take a while at the beginning of the year to get caught up, when all the grass basically grows at the same time, and our process is to try to work with people to make sure the grass is cut and is not a punitive process, so it takes longer than you may see elsewhere. In addition to those, we only issued two tickets last month. It was just for, one was for a tall grass issue that was being ignored by a bank, the other was for the trash issue being ignored by a landlord. One thing that I didn't mention last month, that we actually started, I actually started doing last month, I was working with our building inspector, Mike Fitzgerald. He doesn't have time to drive around and look at everything going on in the city all the time. While I'm driving around looking at front lawns, it's very easy for me to notice if a place is doing business, or doing construction without a permit. And I have sent in, usually about once a day, I'll find one that's doing some sort of construction without a permit, and ninety-nine percent of the time, it's just getting out of the truck, walking up, talking to them for a moment, and they come in and get the permit, and everything's settled. So, as a result, we've had quite a few, a number of people that have been working without permits, but now have permits. On three different occasions, they didn't have licensing or bonding in Beach Grove, and on two of those occasions, I had to actually do a stop work order because they were refusing to come get it. They came and got it later that day. So, helping him out, just while not, it's not taking a whole lot of time, maybe five, ten minutes out of my day, to stop and say, hey, can I see your permit to come get one, and everything's going fine. Any questions from the council?
Derek, can you talk very briefly about fireworks?
Sure. We have, the city of Beach Grove has a fireworks ordinance when it comes to selling fireworks. It requires anyone that's going to sell fireworks in the city of Beach Grove to obtain a permit from the city. The ordinance reads that that permit's valid for thirty days from the date of issuance. It costs two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. We have two stands that today presented before the Board of Works and approved their permit. We have at least one other business that's currently selling fireworks in the city, that's Walmart. They're reluctant to get one. I did visit them on Thursday last week. They didn't have a Department of Homeland Security permit. They've since obtained one. I'm currently going back and forth with them, as well as between Dan and the city attorney, to determine what course of action needs to continue from here on out, because they are reluctant to get a permit from us.
Maybe they could send councilmen to talk to us again.
Maybe. It may come to that.
I welcome them.
But what we also want to look at is the fireworks shop that pops up at the corner.
Right, and, and we've, we've had two pop up. One of them came in before they've opened, proactively got the permit. The other one did not. I went and visited them. They presented me with their expired permit, and they came in later that same day and got their, got the application for a permit. So, they were aware, they just wanted to wait for my visit, I guess. And we'll keep an eye out for any others that happen to pop up in random corner lots in the city and address those as we come across them. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
One other, since you're going around the city and you're, you're looking at things, are you going to be checking the ice cream trucks out and make sure they have the permits?
As I can, it's somewhat...
That's going to be a confusing type situation.
I understand, sometimes it's a little bit difficult, since it's a moving object. I'm not a police officer, I'm not a police car, I don't have lights on me, so I have, on a couple occasions where they've stopped and been serving children, it's been very easy for me to just hop out, walk up, ask for permits. This year, so far, I haven't seen one. I haven't seen a single one in the city of Beach Grove. The one that I saw last year, I told him he needed to leave because he didn't have permits, and I haven't seen him back since, so if we come to that, we'll come to that, but otherwise, if I do, if I do come to one and they don't want to be compliant, I'll just call the police.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Derek, I'd just like to make a comment as far as the permits and so forth. I want the citizens to understand that's for their protection, it's not necessarily a moneymaker for the city, but if, there's nothing worse than having someone call in here and tell us they just got taken by someone that was putting a new roof on or whatever, putting a new driveway in for them. And so, this is to protect the citizens out there. And also, I know one day when you and I were both out, we seen people walking door-to-door that was targeting senior citizens, and they were asked to stop right then, and you followed up on it, and they did come in that day, so. And I know one of the ice cream trucks, a year or two ago, one of the persons that was operating that ice cream, ice cream truck was a child predator. And so, that is the reason why we do these things.
You're, you're very right, especially when it comes to the safety of folks, when it comes to the permits. When I'm there and I happen to see a homeowner, I will talk to them and let them know, this is for your safety. And I've left them know in a couple cases where I found that the person didn't have licensing or bonding, they were very shocked because they were sold a product with the understanding that they had licensing and bonding. The truck out front said they were licensed and bonded, when in fact, they were not. One case, there was an unsafe job going on where the weather head to the building was falling off the building, and it had eight, eight-hundred amp service, so you can imagine if that would have fallen the rest of the way over, what could have happened. We put a stop work order, they fixed that, and also came and got a permit. I was also able to call Mike Fitzgerald out to the scene, so he could inspect and determine what needed to be done to make it a safe condition for the people, everyone involved. Anything else?
Derek, I just, would it be possible, you just, we as citizens, when we see a violation or we see a possible violation, what is the best route to contact you?
There's a couple routes. Probably the easiest for me is to email us at compliance@beachgrove.com. I can get those on my phone, anywhere I'm at. So, if I'm out in the city and I'm stopped at a residence, then I may look at it to see if there's something that came in. You can call us. If you call, I'm probably not going to answer, because I spend most of my time out in the city, but the number is eight-zero-three, nine-zero-nine-nine. Leave a message of where the problem is and what I'm looking for, and I'll go check it as soon as I can. Lately, I've been getting about ten calls a day, so sometimes it takes me a day or two to get back with you, because I'm out checking several things around the city, but I will get back to the callers if they would like a call back. I'll call them back.
What's that number again?
Eight-zero-three, nine-zero-nine-nine. And the other option is compliance@beachgrove.com.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks, Derek.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Derek, very much.
We did not have anybody, with the exception of Dave Harrison, sign up to speak. Dave, did you still want to comment?
Yeah, if I can. Yes, absolutely. I'd rather do it now than at the end, because usually, there's nobody over here at the end. And what I'm going to con, or talk about was the resolution we didn't pass last month on the putting the money back into the rainy day fund and getting rid of the loan program. Another reason is, I'm going to try and keep this to a five-minute thing, and, or three, whatever I'm allowed, but I did put some hours into this. Anthony had mentioned that he knew of other cities that this has worked in, and I'm not here to disprove or anything else. I'm just going to tell you what I found. I called Avon, they don't and they won't, that was the exact words. Greensburg, ah, they did, they quit it in two thousand and four because they got burned worse than we did. And they said that it was a complete failure, not successful. Shelbyville, it was too risky, they checked into it. Seymour, they checked into it, didn't want to do it, but they, they did have two buildings that went through the Main Street program through the state. The guy told me, he says, and, and guess what? He says, those two buildings are the nicest two buildings we have in Main Street, and he says, guess what? They're empty, because the people couldn't, they couldn't even pay it back. One guy was a longtime resident of Seymour, he's no longer a resident of Seymour, he's left. So, I don't know what he got stuck with, or whatever, or how they did it, but Noblesville doesn't, Plainfield doesn't, Martinsville, no, Greenfield, no, Connersville, no. I talked to the guy, Plainfield, who's actually, their clerk treasurer is a, how would I say it? He's a CPA, and he's, one of his main things is dealing with banks, okay? And he kind of laughed, and he says, well, let me ask you this, when you guys did this, were you second, third in position to re-get your loan? And I said, well, I would assume so, the bank IRS comes first in some cases. He says, then why in the hell would you ever make a loan? He said, do you think a bank would make a loan to anybody if they were second or third position? I said, probably not. He said, I can tell you they won't. So, that was his response. I did find one city, and I'm not going to pull any punches, Brownsburg started theirs two years ago. And I can prove it, because she sent me the email of how their program works. And if you, if you would like to take the time to read it, basically, what she said And if you, if you would like to take the time to read it, basically, what she said is they've made two loans in two years. I think they were both for four thousand dollars. The max del loan is twenty-five thousand dollars. And they've not even come close to making one of those. They've made two loans at four thousand. They also have what's called a FOT facet grant. It's a grant. Again, it's kind of like the Main Street that the state does, but the problem with it is, is that nobody's applied for one yet. And they will only loan up to fifteen thousand on it. And on their loans, they only loan up to twenty-five thousand on those. So they've only made two loans at four thousand, and she said, "We really can't say it's a success or a failure at this time." But I just wanted our council to know, and I'm not here to say, "Gosh, we did the wrong thing." I was in a minority, and I live with that, but, but I just can't find anybody that says it's been a success. And I did find two cities, or one city, well, two that did it. One said it was a complete failure, just like ours. I just don't understand why we'd want to keep two-hundred-and-some-thousand and when we could be doing some good with it. But that's my findings, and I wanted to get it out.
Thank you, Dana. Under unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting, General Ordinance Number Six, two thousand and fifteen. It's up for third and final reading. I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Six, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Article Ten, Special Leaves, Section Two, Funerals of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual, whereas full-time employees are on a set schedule, and unfortunately, tragic events happen that cause employees to be off work. And whereas unfortunately, loved ones of employees may pass requiring special arrangements to be made by the full-time employee. And whereas depending on the circumstances, employees may need more time off than currently is given pursuant to the city's personnel manual. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning time off for bereavement. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the following amendment be placed in the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual, Article Ten, Special Leaves, Section Two, Funerals, delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Section Two, Funerals, all full-time employees will be granted up to three calendar days per occasion with no loss of compensation or accruals to attend the funeral of his or her spouse, children, mother, father, sister, brother, or significant other. All full-time employees shall also be granted three calendar days per occurrence with no loss of compensation or accruals to attend the funeral of a father-in-law, mother-in-law, stepfather, stepmother, grandparents, grandchildren, or a permanent member of the immediate family, not mentioned above. Should additional bereavement time be needed, a full-time employee shall be permitted to use up to three additional calendar days of accrued sick leave with the approval of the respected department head. Elected officials and part-time employees are not eligible for this benefit. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning bereavement leave. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall only apply to Article Ten of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual and shall not apply to any other regulation. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Six, two thousand and fifteen is up for third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Mayor, I have a question. Can you repeat the rules on reading by title only?
Yes, we can read an ordinance by title only if every member of the council agrees to do that. And it takes a separate motion. And if it's over one page?
I'll second.
No motion yet. Give me a minute. Thank you. Mayor, while we're signing this motion, I'd like to make, while we're signing the general ordinance, I'd like to make a motion that we read General Ordinance Number Seven, Number Eight, and Number Nine by title only. And then when it comes time for the rest of them, I'll make another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to read them, I'd like to read them by title only, or so the general public knows what we're reading, all of the whereas's, and then by, by just the whereas's, and then call for a vote if I could.
Okay, General Ordinance Number Seven, two thousand and fifteen is up for third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye. Not over a page, Jim.
I was, that was my question. It has to be over a page? Mine's stapled together.
We'll disregard the general ordinance by title only. I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number Seven, two thousand and fifteen into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Seven, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Article Fourteen of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning residency requirements for full and part-time employees. Whereas it is recommended to all employees that they reside in the jurisdiction that they are employed in. And whereas employees can reside outside the city of Beach Grove should they choose to. And whereas state statute concerning residency requirements for sworn police officers and firefighters states they have to live in the county they work in or a county that touches the county they work in. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning residency requirements for full and part-time employees. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires the following amendment be inserted into the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual. Article Fourteen, Employee Behavior, Section Two, delete in its entirety and replace with the following. Section Two, Residency Requirements. Within one-hundred-and-eighty days of hiring as an employee of the City of Beach Grove, the employee shall continuously reside in Marion County or any contiguous county. This includes all full-time and part-time employees. For police officers and firefighters pursuant to the Public Employees Retirement Fund shall already be in compliance with this regulation. All other employees hired from this point forward shall reside within this guideline. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual to reflect this amendment. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above-mentioned change in the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Seven, two thousand and fifteen is up for third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, sir.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Eight, two thousand and fifteen is up for third and final reading. At this time, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. With the whereas's as well.
General Ordinance Number Eight, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Article Four, Section Six of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual pursuant to minimum call-ins. Whereas full-time employees often are called in to work for a variety of reasons, including weather, public events, and to mitigate emergency situations. And whereas the public safety budgets reflect an appropriate amount to pay for overtime activities and staffing levels, and labor agreements already call for the hour amount listed below. And whereas the employees of the Department of Public Works do not have an appropriation for overtime in their budgets, so they are compensated to compensatory time only. And whereas documentation is required through attendance records concerning overtime work and payroll documentation.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Eight, two thousand and fifteen is up for third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Nine, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading only this evening. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
General Ordinance Number Nine, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Article Five, Section Four of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning the Public Employees Retirement Fund. Whereas the city has been a participant in Indiana Public Retirement System since nineteen sixty-seven. And whereas public safety departments are classified as INPRS, police officers, firefighters, and all other employees are considered INPRS public employees. And whereas having adequate pension plans for employees attracts good applicants who in turn become good employees. And whereas the city of Beach Grove desires to continue to be participating members of the Indiana Public Retirement System.
Thank you. Read it by title only?
Yeah.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Nine, two thousand and fifteen on second reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third reading at the July sixth meeting. Thank you. General Ordinance Number Ten, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading only. At this time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Ten, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that calls for the elimination of the Communitative Capital Development Fund. Whereas this fund was established by ordinance in July of nineteen eighty-five. And whereas this fund help raise funds for improvements in the park system. And whereas the mayor could, after declaring an emergency, use up to twenty-five percent of the CCD fund for public safety. And whereas with new ordinances for capital improvements in the park system, this funding mechanism is recommended not to be used. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires to amend the Code of Ordinances concerning Chapter Thirty-Eight, City Finance Taxation. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires the following amendment occur. Chapter Thirty-Eight, City Finances Taxation, be deleted in its entirety. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter Thirty-Eight of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter Thirty-Eight of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove and no other ordinance. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect on January first, two thousand and sixteen, after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
General Ordinance Number Ten, two thousand and fifteen is up, a motion to approve on second reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We'll hear it on third reading at the July sixth meeting. Thank you. General Ordinance Number Eleven, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to, to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
General Ordinance Number Eleven, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Article Four, Extra Duty Compensation of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning compensatory time. Whereas full-time employees may decide to take compensatory time in lieu of being paid to work over and above their normal shifts. And whereas employees of the Department of Public Works are required to take compensatory time in lieu of payment. And whereas there are no guidelines established by the city of Beach Grove concerning compensatory time payments, record-keeping, and sheet balances for employees' attendance records. And whereas the city of Beach Grove must have clear guidelines concerning the use and accumulation of compensatory time.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Eleven, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third and final reading at the July sixth meeting. Thank you. General Ordinance Number Twelve, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The clerk to read it by title only.
General Ordinance Number Twelve, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Chapter Ninety-eight of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Whereas compliance inspectors currently conduct inspections pursuant to Chapter Ninety-eight of the Code of Ordinances. And whereas sometimes inspectors have to issue citations and/or tickets for environmental problems concerning vacant properties. And whereas using only the Beach Grove Sewage Works database sometimes cannot obtain the required information to send correspondence to. And whereas a compliance division desires to properly notify property owners of inspections, issues, or cleanup.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Twelve, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading only. At this time, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, sir.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will hear this on third and final reading at the July sixth meeting. Thank you. General Ordinance Number Thirteen, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading only. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Thirteen, two thousand and fifteen is an ordinance that amends Chapter One-Thirty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Whereas on March second, two thousand and fifteen, the common council passed General Ordinance Number Twenty-Eight, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas General Ordinance Number Twenty-Eight, two thousand and fourteen took effect May second, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas certain notice provisions in the current version of General Ordinance Number Twenty-Eight, two thousand and fourteen are not practical. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter One-Thirty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendments be added to Chapter One-Thirty of the Code of Ordinances. Amend as follow. Title Eight, General Offenses, Chapter One-Thirty Point One-O, Illustrative Enumeration, Number Sixteen. Any business that requires more than ten police runs in a calendar month to respond to a report of theft for a value of less than fifty dollars. The notice provision in Chapter One-Thirty Point O-three and One-Thirty Point O-five shall not apply. Upon receiving one police run in a calendar month under this section, the owner of the business and its local management shall be sent a notice either by personal service or certified mail advising that an investigation has been commended. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter One-Thirty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above-mentioned chapter of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore, be it... Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Thirteen, two thousand and fifteen is up for second reading. This evening, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, sir.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Those oppose the same sign. We will hear it on third and final reading at the July sixth meeting. Thank you. That concludes the unfinished business. There is no new business this evening. Council comments beginning on my far right. Dave?
I hope everyone has a safe fourth of July and go to the park. Thank you.
I was lucky enough to attend Beach Grove Honors Night at the high school. For those of you that weren't able to attend, I think we had forty-seven seniors all involved in the National Honor Society, accepting awards for their high academic achievements. An absolutely wonderful night. We should be very proud of our school system and our kids. What an awesome group of kids. I'm very proud of our young kids, and I hope they continue in eight weeks to show up with the youth council minutes that they can report back to us, because I enjoy that, and I think it's a great representation of our kids to our city. I don't think, I don't think we have them up here near enough. I wish we could get them to show up more. They're awesome. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dave?
Not really. Beach Grove Little League's in full swing. Next meeting, it'll probably be over and done, so if you get out, go down there and watch the kids play ball, they've got a great parking lot now. It's really beautiful, and makes it easier on everybody to get in and get out of there. Last thing I'd like to say, and it's, I wish there was somebody here from the school. I have taken my grandson to school for two years every morning, and there's a group of ladies that stand out there every morning, like a mailman, rain, sleet, hail, snow, whatever the bad weather, and they get these kids out of the car, they get them safely into the school every morning. I wish there was something we could do to commend those ladies. I know that it's a job they get paid, but do you really get paid to help kids in school? That's the first, this is the first school system I've ever seen that did this, and I just think it's really, really nice, and those ladies should be commended. That's all I got.
Anthony? I would just like to echo John's. I wasn't at the high school academic honors night, but I went to the Central Elementary's award ceremony, which held for our second and third graders, and what a great group of kids out there, and great art and awards that they were given, and something that really caught my eye too is afterwards we were invited, because it was at the end of the day, we were invited to pick our students up from their classrooms, and one of the things that I've seen, or that I noticed was just about all of the teachers were crying, the students were hugging their teachers like, you know, nothing that I've seen, and I just think that, you know, that shows really how dedicated our teachers are, and I'd like to thank our school system.
I would ditto with that, and we've got such a great community, and I'd like to thank everyone's here besides the one who'll be watching this on TV. Saturday, I believe, yeah, June sixth, Beautify Beach Grove, that's a five K walk, everyone's welcome. It starts at nine AM, they're meeting down at the park. WFMS fan's gonna be there, there's gonna be prizes given, so come on down. Thank you.
Just ditto to everything everybody else has said before me, and thanks for coming, those of you that have come down, and from our beloved departments, gentlemen, thank you for coming always, and that's it.
Kathy?
There's nothing more to say. Thank you for coming, and we'll see you next time.
I'd just like to congratulate all the Beach Grove High School seniors that are graduating Saturday at ten o'clock at the high school, and one other thing, I'm not sure the exact date really for life is going on down at the pit, June twentieth, so that's a really great thing that, you know, and the city really participates in that.
Motion to adjourn.